Thank you all for coming this evening to the city council meeting. If you please stand, as you already are, and join us in the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation brought this evening by Mr. Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. O s grace heavenly father, we come before you tonight and we ask that you just be with us. We pray your holy spirit is just among us and leads us and guides us. I thank you for each one here and I pray that you'd be with each one. Each one has their own special needs and concerns. Pray that you'd meet those needs. Father, we thank you for this city and we thank for how you're blessing us. We pray that you continue to lead and guide us as a council and we pray that you would just show us the way and how we take care of the people. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Moving on, the first item of business is an opportunity for those of you here in the audience to stand and address the city council. If anyone has anything they'd like to bring up to the city council this evening, that's not on tonight's agenda. Now's the time to come forward if you'd like to address the city council. Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the September 12th city council meeting, claims for city operation, and a public use request for the makers fair. Anything to be pulled by the city staff? Citizens? Questions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded, any concerned questions? Seeing none, vote please.
Long?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Moving right into new business, the first item of which is the KDHE State Revolving Fund Loan Public Hearing. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing now at 7:32.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Staff?
Good evening, council members. Frank Abart, Public Works Director. You may recall about a month ago, I was before you asking to proceed down this path so where we could have a public hearing on a $2.5 million loan application related to the water treatment plant project. And it is just as difficult to describe this today as it was a month ago. This is a loan application, however, it is not a loan. It is for the sole purpose of a forgiveness, they call it, a loan forgiveness. There were kind of two hurdles we had to overcome. One was that we needed a waiver from the EPA for some requirements on this that are related to what they call BABA, Buy America, Build America requirements. We did in fact get that waiver, much to my surprise, towards the middle or end of last week. So the next requirement that has to take place is the approval of us to go ahead and have our public hearing, proceed with the application, which is due to KDHE the 16th or 15th of October. So we're on a pretty good timeline to go ahead and make that all happen. Based upon what I know today, that's the process that we have to go through. How long they will take then before they make the final determination, couldn't hazard a guess. We've never done it like this before. They've never done it like this before. So it's kind of new, but it looks like, I'm going to be optimistic, not cautiously optimistic, I'm pretty optimistic that this is going to happen now at this point. Are there any questions? At least at this time.
Yeah, we'll reserve that right to ask any other questions. Any staff input, other additional staff input? Any questions or concerns from the citizens? Or, or against? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and ask for a motion to close the public hearing now at 7:35.
So moved. Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor?
Yeah?
We have to have a roll call vote to close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry about that. Vote please.
And who did the second come from? Stevens?
My second.
Thank you. Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to item number two, which is the resolution authorizing the KDHE State Revolving Fund Loan Application. Is there any additional, or let's go ahead and get something on the table to discuss? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to complete the application for the KDHE SRF loan in the amount of $2.5 million.
Second?
Second. Staff? Do you have any additional input?
You know, I really don't. It's just a very strange thing. I'm asking you to approve us to apply for a loan that's really not a loan. It's just very odd, but no, I don't have anything else to add.
Well, if we're successful in getting the grant, we'll be successful in getting the loan and that will benefit us to $2.5 million, so.
That's pretty much the summary.
Appreciate the input. Any other questions or any other input from staff? Citizens, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we have a vote. Questions, concerns from the council?
Just real quickly, is there a reason we wanted that waiver for the Build America?
Yes, the waiver considerably increases the requirements that you have to go through and our initial estimate was that it was going to cost our project about $3 million to get this $2.5 million. So obviously, that was a deal killer for us. If we couldn't get the waiver, we didn't want to do this.
Okay, thank you.
But it came through.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to complete the application for the KDHE SRF loan in the amount of $2.5 million. Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item number three, the traffic signal replacement at K-7 and Canaan Drive Engineering Design Services Agreement. Staff?
I thought there was one right after me. Frank Abart, Public Works Director. So as you mayor may not have been aware, we had a problem, I was looking for the date as to when that errant vehicle took out, August 25th, there we go. We had an errant vehicle that took out two of our traffic lights at that intersection of K-7 and Canaan. After much discussion with KDOT and getting that all up and running, we are actually in agreement on what we need to do to replace it and so this is part of the next step on that path. It's an engineering services agreement to do the design that will meet the KDOT requirements and I should add also, it is my understanding that 100% of the cost of all of this recovery will be covered by insurance. Initially ours and then our insurance will pursue it with the errant vehicles insurance company.
Very good.
So this is the first step towards getting a design in place that everybody can approve. Then we'll move towards a construction activity, which means I'll be back to see you again when we get to that point.
Very good. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agreement with Wilson Company Incorporated for Engineering Services associated with the traffic signal replacement at K-7 and Canaan in the amount of $55,127.
Very good, thank you. Any other staff?
I'll second the motion.
Oh, sorry. So moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mrs. Gurley and thank you very much. Other staff? Any questions from the citizens? Seeing none. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start right here with Mrs. Gurley.
I was just surprised that it was our responsibility to maintain those stoplights. I for some reason assumed they were KDOT.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
How hard should it be to get the errant vehicles insurance to provide some money?
I, you know, that's not even part of my concerns, I guess. Our insurance company takes care of our loss and we leave it up to them to go after the other insurance company, so as long as our problem is covered, that's what I was looking for.
And then we'll finish up down here.
I am just curious, you said this is not, this is the complete redesign, replacement of all the lights that are there, not just the replacement of?
No, this is just the two that were.
Just the two. Because I was surprised at how many hours were involved in the design just to replace two poles.
Yeah, it's not as easy as you think.
No, that's why, that's why I was wondering if it was the design for the whole thing.
Yeah, the requirements of the design are that it has to meet the current standards, current KDOT standards, which are different, of course, than when this was put in.
Fifteen years, ten years ago.
Depending on the placement of the pole, it gets really complex about how many feet tall it has to be for the mast, how many feet out, and all of that stuff is pretty much custom made, which gets into another delay.
But the fact that we're just not, just ordering the same thing and it's, it's got to be really redesigned, reengineered.
Pretty much, yeah, but.
Any answers to my questions? Thank you.
Anything else? Nope. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve the agreement with Wilson and Company for Engineering Services associated with the traffic signal replacement at K-7 and Canaan in the amount of $55,127. Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. Hopefully, I think that's all for you. Moving on to item number four, Child Care Sustainability Grant. You got several tonight, too.
I have like four in a row. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Justine Spees, Recreation Manager for the Child Care Sustainability Grant. I had originally applied for this grant back in June before my maternity leave. We did get it and we are being granted a total of $108,000, which is really exciting for Camp Great Adventure. So all these funds do have to be spent before June 30th of next year and we can backtrack any reimbursements from until March 12th of 2020 till that point in time. So currently, we have spent a total of forty, over $43,000 for staff salaries for both spring break and summer camp, as well as all of the classroom supplies for both of those sessions. And tonight, we are asking to spend the remaining in this proposed way. Replacement of the gym lights for $12,000, winter camp for this year, wages and supplies, approximately $3,000. Spring break camp for next year, wages and supplies about $3,000. Staff training, about $7,000. The state does require that each camp staff member go through 16 hours of approved training each year. And this year, or this coming year, I would also like to include a inclusion training as a part of that, as a part of those hours, because our camp population is diverse. Licensing fee, which is $205. Summer camp, staff onboarding expenses for $9,000. That includes their first aid certification, their city physical, the fingerprint-based background check through the state, a drug screen, and of course, their uniforms. Summer camp camper t-shirts for $2,000. Refloring the hallway downstairs in the community center for $12,000. Refloring the bison room and the honeybee room floors for $7,000. And for $8,000, 20 scholarships for families to attend six weeks of free camp. That would pay for half of their enrollment fee and our scholarship would cover the other half as it normally would. So that is the plan that staff came up with for the remainder of those funds.
Very good. I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve spending childcare sustainability grant funds for camp great adventure expenses in the total amount of $108,000.
Second. So moved by Mrs. Woods and seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any other staff input? No. Citizens, questions or concerns? Seeing none. Questions and concerns from the commission of council and I'll start down here, ma'am.
This is a blessing that we have this in this city. It's awesome.
About how many staff make up the different camps? I see, just looking at the salary breakdowns and wondered how many people that covers roughly?
So it depends. If we're going off of a normal camp year, like 2019, we had 36 staffing. That's what I'm budgeting for, for next year. This year, we didn't have nearly that many. It was very bare bones staff this year, but next year, with a pay increase that was budgeted, I'm hoping to get more staff.
And once it's, once this amount is budgeted, can it be reallocated if it's not used within the guidelines of the law?
As long as we, as long as it's for Camp Great Adventure and spent before June 30th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your work on this. Does, do 20 scholarships, does that cover the need? I mean, is there 100 kids that needed or?
I look back at the average today, we only had like 10 kids within the last five years who have utilized our scholarship program. I'm hoping that this will actually entice more people who maybe don't know about our program or don't know that we have a childcare facility here to use those services.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great if we could use more money for scholarships if, if the need's there. I just didn't have any benchmark or how many kids I have, but thank you.
Question or two, yes. Says, to date, you've spent $43,900. Was that for this last summer, too? Or is it all going to be applied to next year?
So the to date number, that's just for this year. So I only went back as far as spring break camp from this year through all of our summer camp for this year. But we do have the option to go back to 2020, however, we did not offer camp during 2020 or 21.
And we've got the money? Where, where's that money coming from? 108?
So the 108 is the grant that Justine applied for and was awarded, so this is, that was the total amount, right?
Yeah.
All right.
So it's a state program.
Yeah, some funds were already budgeted for it already, which had been spent this last summer camp, but this grant is going to pay us back for covering that cost and pay for next year.
Exactly.
And I do, do want to make mention, this 108,000 isn't solely for your own personal childcare.
No. No, she's at home with that.
Yeah.
She's, she looks very cute that I've seen, so it wouldn't cost anything like that. No other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve spending childcare sustainability grant funds for camp great adventure expenses in the total amount of $108,000. Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On item number five, a resolution of intent to adopt the Community for All Ages Plan.
Is it okay if I do like a really quick, like two-minute presentation slideshow thing? Maybe? Can I do a two-minute presentation slideshow thing? Cool. I've seen it, we all need to do it. It's slightly different than what you saw.
She comes with her own cord.
Oh, no, this was down here.
Oh, you had that cord, that's great. Technology's never worked this good before. I jinxed it.
Wow, okay. We'll do it this way, all right. All right, so the Community for All Ages Program is a program by Mark, the Mid-American Regional Council, and they have developed this program for communities across the metro KC area. So a community for all ages is a community that has the community of all ages in mind. So that's from the very young to the very old and everyone in between. They have also created a recognition program to go along with this initiative and there's different standards that cities municipalities can meet. We are trying, or we are hoping to go for the bronze medal soon. A part of that is to give presentations, start the talk about what is a community for all ages and what that looks like as a city, where we need to go from, from here. Part of the, the areas of focus that this program focuses on is community and neighborhood environment, housing, transportation needs, community services and facilities, healthcare and healthy living. And really, this is just us as a city and as a community asking ourselves those vital questions that may go unnoticed, like are accessible, accessibility standards or universal design being incorporated into new housing construction? Do policies encourage private developers to produce an adequate amount of mixed housing and commercial services? Do the community and neighborhood watch, do we have a neighborhood watch program? Do people of all ages have access to healthy food choices? And are there sufficient parks and public open spaces? So all of these are questions that as a city, we should be considering when we make our policies going forward. And I, I can say that as the city of Bonner Springs, a lot of these policies that are in the toolkit that Mark provides, we're already doing a lot of them. But this is really just to start the conversation, that way we can start to gather data on what our current state is as a community for all ages and then set goals and objectives for future progress. And then here are the different stages, if you will. So we will be, or I'm hoping to apply for the bronze level, which is the awareness level, which is basically that the city uses a all ages, all ages lens in our programming activities, in our housing needs, et cetera. The next steps would be assessment and implementation and then maintenance. So this would be an ongoing thing that the city would pursue each year to, you know, continue our progress. And then of course, Mark is awesome. They've already laid out all the tools that the city could possibly need. All these are hyperlinks. I believe you would have gotten the toolkit in your packet. It's very comprehensive, it goes over everything. But all these resources are also available on their website. And all, a part of the program is to adopt the resolution as city council, saying that we are in favor of becoming a community for all ages. And I did present this to the recreation, or the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They were, it wasn't official quorum, but they were like, yes. Planning Commission also gave their approval for this as well. That's it.
Very good, thank you. Go ahead and ask for a motion to have something to discuss.
As an old person, I make a motion to adopt a resolution of intent to become a community for all ages.
Second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Woods and seconded by Mr. Stevens and I'm just going to keep on going. Any other staff, staff comment? Nope. Citizens? Questions, concerns? Seeing none. Questions, concerns, comments from the council and I'll start down here with Mr. Reeves.
Gathering the data, how is that, how's that take place?
Benchmarking. So where are we in comparison to other cities? Where do we need to go? How many parks do we have, how much open space is available? That's a very large question you have.
I just didn't know if there was going to be input from the public at all.
Yes.
Because I know at least one council member, I won't mention his name, but he's not here tonight. So, not to give it away, but I know that's always been a concern with him, is the housing choices available to, to the upper class, might say, the upper age class?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Not what he was saying.
Yeah, we've got to, got to clarify that a little bit.
Okay. Yeah.
But that's why I was curious if there's going to be public input available.
So this toolkit is designed to have community put, community input as well. It's meant to be a conversation for the community as a whole on what our needs are. So if there is a need for housing choices for older adults or even houses where we can age in place, which would be wonderful, because having hurt my back recently, I need a grab bar in the restroom and it's awful. You, you know, I take my youth for granted, but having a home where you can age in place is crucial. And right now, the house I'm at, I'm not going to live there forever. I just know that, there's too many stairs. So this is designed to be a toolkit for us to use, tons of resources, but the community involvement would be part of that.
Great, thank you.
I really appreciate the, the effort. I think this is something that Bonner Springs really strives for already, so I think we'll do really well in this resolution for community for all ages. So I think we already have programming in place for a lot of different age groups. Organizing it and getting it known, I think, is what this will help the most, getting it publicized. I would, it's been, already been received well by the presentations you made and people have made mention of it to me outside of here, which was wonderful to hear someone inquire about something that was coming up on the city council before it even happened. So it, it was well received, they were all in favor of it. They did, they did think it was very appropriate for this to be coming while I was mayor since I'm aged, so they, they gave me that one. I appreciated that, yeah. You made the motion like that, I had to tell you my part, so. No other questions, concerns? Questions or concerns? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to adopt a resolution to become a community for all ages. Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number six, the National Fitness Campaign Project. Staff introduction.
Justine Spees, Recreation Manager, hello again. So we were approached as a city by a national fitness campaign manager and there is a grant available to place a fitness, an outdoor fitness court in our city. He asked if we were interested in this project. I think it's a great opportunity for the city to pursue. There is a two-minute video that I, that someone can send you a link to later or I can play it now, whichever is easier, but it's about two minutes long. Essentially, this program has been around since 79 and their goal is to create accessible outdoor courts for everyone in America, basically. Their goal is to get within a 10-minute bike ride, I believe, of everyone to one of these fitness courts. Wyandotte County does have one already in their area, but we, I think it'd be a great opportunity to pursue here for Bonner Springs as well. There is also a grant available from T-Mobile. That'd be $50,000 to help fund this. So our buy-in could potentially be just $37,000 or a little bit more than that. But if we don't get the T-Mobile grant, it would be $87,000 that the city would have to pay to have these services done, because it's the fitness court itself and then a little bit of the. itself, and then a little bit of the, their services that the grant covers from Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Kansas, and then the other cost to install, and also the concrete base is what we would, as a city, would have to pay for. There is a free app after installation that tells you how to use the equipment. So, if you are using equipment and you're not quite sure what all these different modules or stations do, or how to use them, there is an app that you can download. You scan the QR code, it tells you how to do different circuits on it. This fitness court is designed to be accessible for all ages. So, it doesn't matter what age you are, you should be able to use some component of this fitness court.
Very good. Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to allow staff to pursue the National Fitness Campaign Project and grants to help fund the project.
Second.
So, moved and seconded. We'll start with staff. Anything to add?
The only thing I'd say is, this is a project that, this is just the beginning of it, so similar to the conversation about the community for all ages, I think this particular one has a lot of input still that we're going to be seeking. So, I just kinda wanna make that clear, that there is a little bit of a timeframe in terms of when the funds can get used, as far as their current allotment. But things like where it's gonna go and all of that are still things that need to get fleshed out, so just kinda wanna give, give an understanding, this is the start, and there's several milestones that need to occur before we get to the finish line.
Thank you. Any other staff? Seeing none. Questions or concerns from the citizens? Seeing none. We'll start with council questions, right here.
Okay. I noticed that each fitness court has a one-of-a-kind work of art. Could we work with the high school, maybe, and get the high school involved with the work of art that comes up with each one?
Yeah, I, yeah, that's.
I just think that would be super.
I think, yeah, anything where, again, we can try to bring people together. I think it's about making sure that this project is one that the community really is involved in.
That's, yeah.
Wants to, wants to have.
Other questions, concerns, comments?
Sean answered one about potential locations. Is this pretty impervious to misuse? I foresee skateboards and other things being.
Vandalism resistant.
Yeah, not even so much that, but people climbing on it in ways that it's not designed to be utilized and.
In talks with Angel over at Wyandotte County, yes, it is, it's pretty vandal-resistant. We would have to do some maintenance to it every year, just general maintenance and upkeep, but.
Is the surface of it something that is?
It's like a pour-and-place surfacing.
Well, it is actually a concrete surface. It's not a cushioned.
It's not concrete, it's a squishy one.
It is a squishy one.
Yep.
I was gonna say, concerns about the graffiti and stuff. I assume location would be very important, then, so it's in a high visible area. Are we gonna try to utilize city-owned property if we already have some that potentially could work?
Yeah.
I know you've still said location's gonna have to be something we'll have to decide on, but.
Yeah, and I think, I'll just be honest, some of the locations that we've looked at, and this isn't the only project that we've looked at for this location, but the former side of the PD facilities, again, you've got a downtown location there that already has a parking lot. There's a little bit of work that would certainly need to occur there, but that's, I think, kind of the location we're looking at, where, again, that's a high visibility.
It's very visible.
The city owns it already, so, again, I think it's about leveraging property assets that we already have and lessening the cost to us overall in the project.
Thank you.
Is there, in the future, is there a minimum amount that has to be spent along with this grant from the city on an annual basis or something, or not, or what?
Not on an annual basis, no.
Okay. Anything else, sir? No? Anne?
Does your counterpart in Wyandotte County have any idea yet of what maintenance looks like from a spending perspective?
I didn't actually ask that of her. The campaign manager was estimating about a thousand dollars each year between power washing between the seasons.
Is that about what you do on the city playgrounds, similar to what you do on, like at Lyons Park?
That would be a better question for Public Works.
They're gone, sorry. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to allow staff to pursue the National Fitness Campaign Project and grants to help fund the project. Thompson?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number seven, which is the Intergovernmental Services Agreement with Lenexa and Olathe to offer combined senior center trip opportunities to, in 2023.
All right. And Justine Spees, Recreation Manager, last time. So, this is an agreement between the three cities for the tri-city trips. We started this originally with just Lenexa in twenty-one, and basically, it was a partnership between us. That way, we wouldn't have to cancel as many trips, because between our seniors and their seniors, neither one of us could fill a giant charter bus. But by combining the two cities, we were able to go on these longer, bigger trips. By adding Olathe, that kinda takes some of the pressure off of us as well. So, this was our first year partnering with Olathe for the tri-city trip. So, we are looking to continue this agreement between the three cities for next year. It was budgeted for, and staff is pretty excited. Tomorrow, they're actually leaving for their trip to Arkansas to see the, there's an art gallery there, and Thorn Chapel Church, and a whole bunch of other fun stuff that they're going to see, so we're excited. We're enjoying our partnership with them.
Very good. I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to enter into a service agreement with the cities of Lenexa and Olathe. To do that stuff.
Seconded. Very good. Any additional staff? Citizens, questions or concerns? Seeing none. I'll start down here with council. You get to go with the trips?
I don't.
Does that, who?
Gloria does.
Gloria does?
So, Gloria is our representative. She is the escort for these trips, so to make sure that we don't lose any seniors and they had all their questions answered. She does a great job.
Keep the rowdy seniors in line?
Yes.
Well, that's wonderful, and she would be great at it, so.
Yep.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. Onto item number eight, the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant, AFG Grant. Award. Staff? I like the word "award."
Awards are always good. All right, Chris Shennings, City of Bonner Springs, Fire and EMS Department. Firefighter PPE is critical for us to do our job. It's really what allows us to do what we need to do to protect our citizens. These are gonna be quick slides, no long ones today. NFPA 1581 is one of the documents out there that defines how long we can actually use our gear for and what that compliance standard is. That standard actually states that our gear is good for ten years of service. We're facing more and more challenges every day in a fire service in terms of the exposures that we're facing from chemicals to heat, as well as just the type of duties that we're seeing with bloodborne pathogens and everything else. This is putting tremendous strain on our gear, let alone our increase in call volume that we're seeing here in Bonner Springs. This is a chart I put together. Ironically, this is from our 2021 budget presentation for the 2022 budget. At that point in time, the set of gear for turnout jacket and pants was twelve hundred and nine hundred dollars respectively, or about twenty-one hundred dollars. That cost today for that same set of gear is now forty-two hundred dollars. That's a complete doubling of the cost of that gear. It's become a real challenge and a burden for departments all over the country. We're trying to do what we can with our gear. We've put some programs in place. We've made an investment in some pretty costly extractors to remove some of those chemicals and try to preserve the gear. We do periodic gear inspections, but as these pictures kinda show, some of our gear that's actually our frontline gear is in a pretty dismal shape. This is nothing that is probably new to anybody. This is what we see all across the country. The problem is this gear puts our firefighters simply at risk. So, with that, we've done a lot out there to try to find some creative solutions, from working with our partners over in Edwardsville, where some of our part-timers who are full-timers basically sharing that gear between the two departments. We've been pretty productive with some state and local grants to try to get a set or two of gear every year. We've been successful the last couple of years with that. And then finally, we've been doing what we can with budgets to try to get a couple sets every year, depending upon how that budget closes out. However, the big question was how we're gonna get ahead of the cycle. It's easy to program plan, but when you don't have that program in place for years, we have to get caught up someplace. So, I'm pretty happy to announce that we've done some research and put forward this year for the federal Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program, which we received notification of last week, that we've been selected for a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar award towards the purchase of that critical gear for us. So, what is the AFG program? That's the Assistance to Firefighter Awards Program. Of the approximately twenty-nine thousand fire departments across the country and about ten to twelve thousand EMS agencies that are eligible, the issue in 2021 is about three hundred and twenty-five grand awards throughout the entire country. We've actually been extraordinarily fortunate in Bonner Springs. This is our third consecutive year actually receiving this, which is largely unheard of to actually get. We have a very unique grant position and case that we're able to make here. That grant targets fire and EMS agencies that are able to document both the financial need, but also the state, local, and national impact of how those grants will actually come into play. So, what is the actual grant? The grant is a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for, sorry, a hundred and, slide's actually wrong, my apologies, a hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars for the program award of that, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars approximately is the federal share. Our obligation for that is the five thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-one dollar local share. So, why is this a good grant to do? Quite frankly, it lets our responders meet the needs of our community with the protection that they need. We simply can't do our job without this gear. On top of it, as we've been talking about, especially with a lot of the talk over the tax incentives and renewal of that, we have lots of critical issues at play, from apparatus replacement, equipment replacement, training and resource, and staff development, as well as just overall staffing needs. This is a huge offset, allowing us to address these other needs and not have to dip into that jar and greatly impact services. And finally, as I mentioned, this is our third award. It actually benefits us to show consistent use and good placement of these awards as we continue to go out for additional awards in coming rounds. That's my presentation.
Thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the 2021 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. The AFG Grant Funding Opportunity in the amount of eleven, a hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nine cents in federal funding with matching city funds in the amount of fifty, five hundred, sixty-one dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
So, moved and seconded. Other staff input? Nothing? Citizens, questions, concerns? Questions and comments from the council? We'll start down here with Mr. Reeves.
This looks like it'd be a logistical problem trying to order these sizes. Are, do they expand?
It's actually a huge logistics challenge. Talking with Sean about some solutions and some timing issues as well as to when we'll execute on this grant. My assumption right now is this will probably get rolled into next year's budget rather than executing this year. We do have some time before we start making some specific decisions. And there's some internal alterations to the grant in terms of which exact pieces of that equipment and how we allocate those funds, as long as within the scope of that project. But getting gear right now is a challenge. Last set of gear we ordered in January and received it about a week and a half ago.
It just looks like, you know, you get different sizes of firefighters.
Yes.
Could cause a problem.
Yeah. Unfortunately, they don't size firefighter gear by small, medium, and large. There's some specific sizing, so that we're flexible with our gear, and we don't have huge airspaces and everything else, unfortunately. It winds up being somewhat customized.
That's kinda what I was wondering.
Yeah. Fortunately, lots of firefighters are within a common body type, as you may notice, so we have good luck reusing gear.
Ooh, I'm not touching that one either.
I want to appreciate all the hard work in locating these opportunities to make sure that our, the men and women of, our men and women of the force are properly protected, and at the same time, saving our taxpayers a lot of dollars, so we really, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the transition to a paid department affect our standing in applying for these types of grants going forward?
The short answer is yes. One of the things that we do is we create a certain category. We've kinda had some conversations about this, about how to remain very competitive. These grants are out there, including for some staffing costs and other things in future years. There's ways that we can set ourselves to be very competitive while still moving in that direction, without completely foregoing that. Typically, the grants are awarded for volunteer and career. We're kind of in the sweet spot right now, where we kinda get to apply across the board for a lot of grants. So, I think there's still some value in maintaining some type of option for that, while we still progress to where the city needs to be very quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it seems as though if this is successful, we get, for the price of one turnout gear, we get about twenty, so.
Yes.
That's, that's pretty good. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to accept the 2021 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Funding Opportunity in the amount of eleven hun, one hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nine cents in federal funding with matching city funds in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thing is, that's all the new business we have before us this evening. We move on to reports, the first of which, city managers' report.
Just a couple of quick notes on a few events going on. The Mobile Mammogram Bus will actually be at the library on October first, nine, nine o'clock to three PM. There's a flyer included in the city manager report for that. That's always a very popular event that comes to our library. Also, the Halloween Story Trail, I think this is a really great showcase of the city working with a longstanding contributor to our community, which is Agricultural Hall of Fame. That's on October 29th, three to six. I know that Nathan is still looking for sponsorships still, so if anybody is interested in helping out on that by way of donating candy, he'll be all ears. Is that a fall joke? I don't, anyway. A really bad one, but, yeah.
Don't give up, you did. Don't give up to the mayor, either.
Yeah, fair enough. And then also, back, I think by popular demand, is basketball is back. It's the second year we've done this now, too. So, registration for that is opening up here shortly. I don't think Oliver's gonna get the same coach that he had last year. He might be busy with a new child himself, but nevertheless, there are a lot of things going on in the Recreation Quality of Life Arena for the City of Bonner Springs. Do want to also note that did have a walk-through for the eleventh month walk-through for this facility, as well as taking a look at the police department, the general contractor, and the architect. Still a lot of things, kinda moving forward on that to get wrapped up and all that, but that is something that took place last week. And then, lastly, you know, tonight is, I think, really a showcase of a lot of what And then lastly, you know, tonight is, I think, really a showcase of a lot of what goes on behind the scenes for a lot of city staff. Just in two, two grants, it's a quarter of a million dollars because of the individual efforts of really two, two folks sitting in the room tonight with Mr. Jennings and Ms. Spease, working to bring, as, as Tom had alluded to, money back to the community that helps to increase the, the level of services that are offered here. That's on top of two, not to forget the roughly two-and-a-half million dollar grant they were hopeful to get on the water plant that was talked about. So a, a lot of things going on in the community, and a lot of positive things. I'll bring this up, too, is, is also with Chief Naff's review earlier today with the policies that are been put into place with the police department. That was, those conversations are meant to, to really, one, inform, but also highlight what the departments are doing to professionalize the organization in total, and those same policies, I shouldn't say same, but the fire department's also taking on Lexi Poll as well, as far as, again, giving some clear understanding of, of standard operating procedures by way of best practices. So I just want to, again, bring, bring those efforts up and, and truly highlight those. With that being said, one of the things that we've been trying to, as, as long as I've been here, fill the void of, of sort of that public information with the loss of the newspaper, probably about, what, seven, eight years ago now. And we've done a lot of things as an organization, it's individual departments, to try to, again, fill that void, one of which has been the newsletter that we've been doing on a quarterly basis. That's actually going to be moving to a monthly basis now, again, really to probably highlight all the things that we've talked about tonight, that, again, I think speak volumes to the work of, of city staff and, and really the, the efforts of you all, as well as the elected body, and, and helping steer the ship and give guidance as far as what you all like to see this community strive for. So, again, I just wanted to say all that, and I think that is all I have this evening.
Thank you. City Council items, and we'll start down here. Ma'am?
Yeah, I just want to thank Parks and Recs for helping make the farmer's market Family Picnic Day a success, and also Bonner Springs EMS for bringing the trucks out for kids to take a look at as well. And also, since the chief had talked today a little bit about staff, or his staff, and what they do, I had the opportunity to call nine-one-one this past weekend for something minor. Everything was fine, but I was really impressed with the short amount of time that the officer showed up at my house, and how professional and kind, and how safe that they made me feel. So appreciate that very, very much.
Then, just good job.
Thank you very much for making our community better.
I commend the mayor for not doing this, and now I'm doing it. I told him I was bad about it. And I proved myself right. The corner of Metropolitan and Nettleton, as you are headed east on, on Metropolitan, you come to the top hill, the stop sign, you can't see the stop sign there very well. That might need some trimming. And Jeff, I know south of your house, if you're leaving your house headed for downtown, there's a stop sign there you can't see.
At?
One hundred and-
Oh, with trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, at one hundred and thirty-first and Elk? Is that right?
Yeah, one hundred and thirty-second street.
Hundred and thirty-second and Elk?
That one, there's another one there, and I've seen a couple others. I'll find out what the addresses are, give them to you.
Very good.
That's it.
Seeing nothing else. Thank you. I'd like to also address that. Thank you, Sean, for bringing it up, and, and as many of the council people have. It seems as though there, there's been a shift in the culture in Bonner Springs, especially in the staff that we have. There seems to be a culture of professionalism. And it's not just in the police department. We had a presentation tonight that continues to bring us up to speed on the current standards of practice, but also in the Public Works Department. They have, like Sean said, two-and-a-half million dollars worth of grants to trying to help this community with the new water treatment plant. The Recreation Department, hundreds of, hundred thou, over a hundred thousand dollars of grants that they went out of their way, two hundred thousand dollars, or I can't keep track on my hands, that through their level of professionalism have investigated and found that would benefit the City of Bonner Springs. Same way with the fire department and the turnout gear. So not, not that this is anything unusual, this is the level of the standard of care the citizens of Bonner Springs now are receiving and are becoming more and more accustomed to, and it's appreciated. These are things that are quality-of-life issues that all of us take in stride, and all of us that live in Bonner Springs. And we want you all to know that it's appreciated, and it's, it's going a long way. It's not like this in every community, and Bonner Springs is better. Thank you. I did have one complaint today concerning the intersection at one hundred and thirty-fourth and Kansas Avenue, the four-way stop there. They've had concerns with speed, and the, the way the hill hits, sits there at certain times of the day, it's very difficult to see the stop signs with the sun in the eyes. So maybe some, they suggested quite a few different things, all, some of which they didn't think would cost anything, but signs that would prepare people for the stop ahead, perhaps, maybe additional, uh, uh, ability, easier to see stop signs, I guess, with the poles that have vinyl on them or something to that extent, or rumble strips. They all made, made lots of suggestions. They also wondered if it was really actually necessary to have that be a four-way stop with Kansas Avenue as busy as it is, and maybe only a stop at the cross-section. I'm not a professional traffic engineer, don't, did not stay at Holiday Inn last night, so I don't presume to be able to make that determination, but those things that can be reviewed, I would appreciate it. The traffic lights at Nettleton and Comper flashing red? Is that a part of the-
Yeah.
Program to improve those? Yep, very good. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add. Please enjoy all the things that are going on in Bonner Springs. The RIM Fest is in full spring, full, full force, and we appreciate it being here, and, and it looked like it was very well-attended over the weekend.
I know we had eighteen thousand on Saturday.
My goodness. That's, that's wonderful. And that, of course, is one of the venues that increases the load on our EMS and public safety departments. So please, everyone, if you have an opportunity, to encourage everyone to get out and vote, and continue the quarter cent sales taxes. They make an impact and save Bonner Springs residents many meals in the property tax fight. So it would be, in all of our best interest to continue to pass those. It helps save, save our citizens' property tax. So other than that, I stand for questions? Seeing none. We're adjourned.